We'll start seeing 005. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, our nation, our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, for some of you out there that are thinking what's going on. Well, Tony has hurt his back delivering a refrigerator. He won't be here tonight. Mr. Smith is remoting in. Taylor Sackton is remoting in. Gary Hyrum's remoting in, and Scott Frank is remoting in. Justin Booth will not be here tonight as well due to scheduling conflict with his children. With that being said, we can call over.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy? Ms. Grant? Here. Mr. Booth? Yeah? Here.
Motion to excuse Mr. Dunphy and Mr. Booth?
Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ms. Grant? Yes. Mr. Dunphy? Yes. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Towing, lead us in our open path, please.
Sure. Dear Lord, give us the strength, the courage, to do business for the city. Keep us all safe. I'm thinking of those that are under the weather today, or Tony for his back. But please look over us as we make the decisions for the city. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
If anybody had a chance to leave the minutes from the last meeting? Any changes needed today?
To accept.
Yes. Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Grant? Yes. Yeah. Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. We want to be honoring treasures report. Mr. Sackton is remoting in, so Taylor, you'll take away.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Very good.
Yes.
Okay. I had to run like my phone and the computer for some sound reasons, so I wasn't sure if it was causing issues. The treasures report, I was not prepared to read that. If you guys give me a second, I can go grab it.
Do you want me to get Tony to do it?
Yeah, that's great. That would work fine.
Why don't you just defer it to the next meeting?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so auditors' report, start with the blue page for you guys. This is for October 2020. The first page is just how did our fund balances change? This is connected to page two. Second month in a row, the city brought in more revenue than it spent in expenditures. We thankfully got some reimbursements owed to us from the sewer plant project and Wood Lane Slip Project, as well as some CARES Act monies. This is a month ahead, but the CARES Act was spent or encumbered down to the penny thanks to a lot of folks' hard work. So that chapter, unless there's a new disbursement, should be closed for us. And then the, just right here, the sewer fund is the last fund to lag. If you guys go to page two, you can see, let me see if I can't share my screen for those at home. Okay, there it is. If you guys at home can see that. Page two here is the fund balances. You'll see more money brought in than spent at the bottom. General fund sitting nicer than it was due to some state help. Street funds looking good. Capital improvement looking stable. So a lot of good news here. Page, the next page for us is are our funds healthy? So you'll see the general fund, about a third of what we'd like to see. That'll be a long-term project, so no panicking there. Street funds looking good, as I said. Rec fund could use, you know, future work. Capital and water looking just about there, and sewer lagging just a bit. Here's our expense and revenue reports. This is just a summary. Council and the city manager, you guys have a full breakdown of every line item in your inbox. For those of you at home, you can get a breakdown on our website of every month. I won't go through every single number, but it's there for your review. The next page is I wanted to talk about the Department of Taxation. Just for review of anyone in the room or at home, over the years 2013 to 19, the former Deputy Auditor Administration allowed the city to fall out of compliance with the State Department of Taxation. This caused the accumulation of almost $25,000 in assessments. Those assessments, I've been fighting in my office since this spring, and we received word Friday that the tax commissioner agreed to my appeal and would be getting rid of almost 100% of those fines and assessments, and they would be written back to us in 2021. They did say it could be a nine-month timeline, so that'll take some time. But the Attorney General's Office did tell me that that is pretty unusual for such a broad abatement, so I'm feeling pretty good about that. And I wanted to thank the city manager, city council, for supporting those efforts to get back those dollars that didn't serve a good public purpose for our taxpayer. On our second to last page, I'll just finish up with water abatement signups were mailed to all customers last week. We had our first five signups today. The water abatement program is for anyone at home. This is a water leak insurance. It's not really an insurance policy. It's you pay the premium, and the city will cover up to $500 of your water bill if you get a major leak, as is pretty typical at Leax and Tupper's Plains and other places. So a pretty good deal. You could pay that premium for 16 years, and if you got a water leak, it would pay for itself. So a pretty good premium price. For city council, I'll quickly go over the credit card statements that I'm required to present to you guys. The first three pages are September, and the last three pages are October. And you'll notice some of these have dated information, but you can sort of see their police, the street water, and then fire, and then I call it the administrative card. It's what Scott's office or my office will use. You'll see some of the expenditures, including getting a notary public back at City Hall because that was a serious hold, not a serious holdup, but was a hiccup for us at some point, finding notary for the many things we need to notarize. You'll see some CARES Act expenditures on the fire card in September. Looks like some K-9 expenses and other things, as well as a credit monitoring for the city. Anyway, that's September, October. You'll see some training expenditures for the police, some more K-9 expenses, as well as you can kind of see here kennels and other items. Looks like tent for a police cruiser. Let's see, on my card, you'll see some Microsoft Office expenditures for the whole of City Hall, as well as labor law posters we have to post each year by law. And that's about it. Nothing too out of the norm for our credit card statements these months. And I'll just finish with council, or anybody else watching can find these reports online at our website at any time. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to help.
We want to bring the town?
Mr. Taylor?
Taylor, to explain the water abatement. As everybody knows, the one-time fee a year, a link over is the leap up to $500 per year.
Yep. Was that, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear very well. Did you want me to explain it more?
Yeah, I just want you to let everybody know that, you know, so the fee that you pay, which is $30, am I correct?
Yes, yes.
That $100 fee off your water bill if you have a leak, but that's only one-time occurrence per year.
Yeah, well, the policy may, it's up to $500. If your leak is under 500, I believe you can claim it twice, but it's a $500 maximum for the year. $30 premium that you pay before January 10th. Everyone would have received a signup form and a brochure for it if they haven't today in the next few days. And like I said, if you receive a water leak, you just call the water office. Typically, folks discover this either through our crews telling them or through a high water bill. And just call our office, say, "I have a leak, you know, I had so-and-so fix it. Here's the receipt, I fixed it." And then you call this water office, and depending on how high the bill is, obviously if it's over $500, we can only do 500, but if it's under, it's 500 or less, we will work to credit it just right on the bill. So it won't be like a payment or, it won't be like typical insurance. It's more of a protection on your water bill.
Very good. Motion to approve, if anybody has any more questions, motion to approve the monitor report and defer the meeting.
Second. Ms. Grant? Yes. Mr. Dunphy? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Mayor's Court Report. Report is still waiting on software, which is pretty close to being installed now. We've gotten a lot of information, fines are due, but to give you a short summary, the last month, we collected about $4,000 in fines and fees.
New microphone.
Okay, you're.
Dan, Taylor's, Taylor's screen is still on, going. Taylor needs.
Should be counted.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying, Gary. I'm sorry. Should be fixed.
Okay.
Mayor's Court Report, so almost installed. We've had to get them, get them, fines that were due, and a list of our officers' badge numbers, all record filing numbers, all information. So that all, almost been all of it sent. BMP numbers and, but, so last month, we collected about $4,000 in fines and court costs. This month, we don't have Mayor's Court because it's the day before Thanksgiving. We only have Board of supervisors this week, or this month, and right now, we're recording $2,100 for one Mayor's Court. That's all I got with that. Citizens comments? Thank you very much, citizens comments.
Scott's gonna do the citizen comment.
We don't have any comments at this time, other than a sound quality check, and I believe we've addressed it as much as we can at this point.
Yeah, and you know what, that's an issue. If we're still having to rely on these mics, and these mics up here, we need to get that looked into. That was the whole point of putting those mics up there, so we wouldn't have these.
Totally tracking. That happened Friday. I was out sick Friday, and I'm still out sick today, so I haven't had a chance to fix or check a little bit.
All right. Any business or organizational comments? Committee discussions?
Planning and Development had a committee meeting last Thursday where we began preliminary conversation about being ATV, UTV friendly in town on certain streets. So that's something that we're going to be working through over the next probably several months, including discussion about ultimately putting out a survey to citizens to get some feedback. We also began discussion on a camping ordinance to deal with both prohibited camping and also commercial camping in town for business ventures. And we also are talking, and I'm working with Mr. Sackton on this, the committee is, about business registrations, how we can work out some kind of process to know what businesses exist in town, and how we can do that in a way that is not burdensome to our, to our businesses, because we want to be business, obviously support our businesses and be business friendly for economic development reasons. So we're just trying to figure out what the best route is for that, and I'm actually going to engage with the Chamber of Commerce to get some feedback from them. I forget any meeting for us? I think that was it? Yeah, I think that was it for us.
We have a finance meeting on the 18th. It was to discuss the 2021 budget. If anyone wants to look into that, it's on the Nelsonville Facebook page.
We had a police and fire meeting the day before the, which was Tuesday, last Tuesday. Basically, we discussed firefighters' expansion of the fourth member, which financially is not feasible right now. We talked about police departments, and they're adding a 10th officer, which was within their budget that they have chucked money around inside their budget, accomplished. And then we also talked about Hawking and Nelsonville's dispatch and their cooperative agreements that they've been going through, and everything's been going very well between the two. Very little hiccups on the dispatching. It's been a very smooth transition. So we have asked Scott to start pursuing, I guess Dr. Young, for next year's cost, as well as contract for their dispatching. So that was it for that.
One thing I, unless you said it and I didn't hear it correctly, Dan, was the withdrawing from the current county contract.
Correct.
So that's, I'm not sure what the next move is. I'm sure we'll have to put some sort of legislation forward, but that was the big one.
What that means for the citizens and the residents, you know, if you're, so 911 dispatching for the fire and police, even if you, if you have an emergency, you call the fire line, and they'll ship it right over to Hawking for dispatch. So don't hesitate to call 911 if that's what you need to do. For non-emergencies, still call Nelsonville. That will go straight to dispatch or over to Hawking College, and they will dispatch an officer to your location. But as far as 911 goes, if you do need that service, or you have an emergency where you feel 911 is appropriate, please call.
Um, the, we do have a comment. Missy Perez asked to go into, please go into detail about the finance committee meeting, since the audio was not working properly, referring to the online streaming was not a good idea. So I think she's just asking for maybe more notes or word clarification from that meeting.
Oh, it was just pretty much every run out of the budget. I mean, I don't remember word for word. Dan, do you remember it word for word?
I do not remember word for word.
I do not either.
There's a lot of things that were discussed as far as the finances go.
Right.
They were part of the meeting. They made comments on our meeting.
I'm sorry, I don't remember word for word what we discussed.
Okay. Carl, it was, so they can check out the recording on the Nelsonville.
What?
The finance committee meeting was recorded. Did it not be checked out on the Nelsonville webpage rather than try to do it something tonight?
Okay, thank you. Yes, Gary, you're right. It was, it was recorded, and I expect you can find it on Facebook and on the webpage.
My recommendation would be, and I haven't checked it to verify, but I know Bear does a really good job at handing out after the live recordings complete, and then he turns it, before he puts it on YouTube. So it's possible, I say to verify it personally, that YouTube will have a better, better recording.
Any other questions?
Uh, nope. It seems like the sound's cleared up for quite a few folks out there.
So.
The sound sounds good to me. I got a concern in that we try to get a price from Dr. Young before we deal with the county.
I think we are having Scott look into that. I think we asked a finance meeting if he would give us some numbers before we make a decision.
Okay. Thanks.
My intent was to get there this week, however, change of events, so it'll be the week after.
It's gonna be two weeks. You're gonna be, you're gonna be quarantined for two weeks.
I'm in till Tuesday, so not quite, not the whole time, but hopefully, if not, I can try and set up a Zoom meeting with her as well.
All right.
All right, we'll do a quick fire department here.
You are proceeding, Harry?
Yes, yes. This'll be quick. We've been working with a lot of good stuff today, so we don't have a whole lot on our list. We currently have all five members that were in the empty class have now passed the empty class. So the next step is national certification. We're working on that right now. We currently have two members in Fire Two, which is professional fire certification training. And I was speaking with members of the chamber, and the fire department's going to help this year with trying to get some of the northward local stuff set up and talking with them. Their volunteerism has been a bit. So we're going to work with the utility department to get the house ready there, and then our crew members actually entering calls, and we'll be working on, working with some of the lighting and getting lighting set up. We're working on logistics for the Christmas toy giveaway right now. Obviously, our policies and procedures, even at the fire department, are changing, pretty much bi-weekly, as it is good. We will tell you that whatever we do will be safe. So we're working on that logistically right now. Obviously, we want to have the deep side of our building, but we're working on some stuff to be outside. We currently had, by the week of the ninth, the 12th, we had members that participated in a vehicle extrication class, by Howl Rescue, I believe it was Howl Rescue Extrication Village, I think it was called, Crash Course Village. So that was a four-day class, all day long. Members from all over Athens County participated in that, and very, very good class, very advantageous, because that class comes at a high price. It was hosted through that company, free of charge to our department members that participated. For those in the room, notices a different smell. We are in the process right now of decontaminating or disinfecting City Hall and working on doing, working on disinfection procedures at the fire department right now as well. We now have in service a new disinfecting machine. It's an EAM 6000. I can't really tell you exactly what EAM stands for. We just took possession of this machine with the help of Scott and council through CARES Act funding, and we are actually putting that to use to clean the entire facility tonight. We will continue to try to disinfect in the evening, as far as wiping down and cleaning. And this device will actually help us tremendously in between calls. Anytime we take an AMS call, we are taking quite a few calls in the city that are COVID-related, and we have to take the time to decon in between calls. Sometimes that's almost impossible. This machine still takes about five minutes for the inside of our each apparatus to decon. That includes spraying and wiping, but this will actually speed our process up quite a bit. So this is very, very much needed, very well needed, and we actually might need another one here in the near future. That's all I have to report.
Okay. We have any questions? All right. Thank you, Harry. Go to the second. Excuse me?
Somebody had a question?
No. I asked if I had any questions. All right. We go on to second reading, 8320.
An ordinance authorizing a $30 per month allowance for cell phones for police chief, fire chief, service director, water plant operator, wastewater treatment plant operator, and code officer. Whereas personal cell phones are used for city business by the police chief, fire chief, service director, water plant operators, wastewater plant, treatment plant operator, and code officer. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the bodily employee shall receive a $30 per month allowance for personal cellphone usage for city business. Police chief, fire chief, service director, water plant operator, wastewater treatment plant operator, and code officer. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest date permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading the 23rd day of November 2020.
Council discussion? Well, I have a question. So if you don't want to take it, do you have to take it?
Nope. Want it? Because there'll also be a reading sign that goes along with it. Should they choose to accept the allowance, then of course their entire phone is now public record.
So they'll find a form, correct?
Just to acknowledge that they understand that their phone becomes public record, should they take the allowance? If you choose to take the allowance, no harm, no foul, then it falls under the same rules as Elizabeth previously explained, that only the city business on the phone is public record, but not the entire phone.
Just the other question I had. We answer any questions?
Whatever was done, I think.
You need a motion to adopt?
Agreed.
I'll second. John? Yes. Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, ordinance 8920. Nor is leaving the 2020 appropriations ordinance. Somebody's gonna review.
I'll let her do this. In order to amend the 2020 appropriations ordinance, it follows. Transfer $3,000 from line item number 200-180-5000 to line item number 230-180-40010. Operating supply. Transfer $4,000 from line item number 600-600-68040 to line item number 600-600-67690. Appropriate, from the unappropriated balance to sum of $500 to line item number, I don't know, well, that's not the right number. Taylor?
Should be 100.
It should be 1000. Okay. Then 625-90010, indigent expenses. Whereas the 2020 appropriations ordinance needs to be amended. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the 2020 appropriations ordinance is amended as follows. Transfer $3,000 from line item number 230-180-400 to line item number 230-180-40010. Operating supply. Transfer $4,000 from line item number 600-600-68040. dash six eight zero four zero to line item number six zero zero dash six zero zero dash dash six seven six nine zero plow. Appropriate from the unappropriated balance to sum of five hundred dollars to line item number one zero zero dash six two five dash nine zero zero one zero indigent expenses. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest date permitted by law. Truly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twenty-third day of November, two thousand twenty.
Counsel, discussion? Motion to suspend?
I move.
A second.
Um, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Fran? Yes. Yeah. Yes.
I'll do it, Doc.
Second. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Fran? Yes. Yeah. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Moving on to ushering ordinance ninety twenty, ordinance authorizing city manager to execute a contract with the Great Lakes Community Action Partnership. Somebody introduce?
I'll introduce it.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Great Lakes Community Action Partnership to perform activity with respect to the CBVG grant program for sewer plant projects phase three and declaring an emergency. Whereas upon recommendation of STANTEC engineering, it is necessary to hire Great Lakes Community Action Partnership to perform activity with respect to the CBVG grant program for the sewer project phase three. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city manager is authorized to execute the contract with Great Lakes Community Action Partnership to perform activity with respect to the CBVG grant program for sewer plant projects phase three in accordance with exhibit A attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. This ordinance is being passed as emergency measure pursuant to Ohio revised code seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary to timely meet the funding application deadline and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Truly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twenty-third day of November, two thousand twenty.
Any counsel discussion? Motion to suspend?
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Fran? Yes. Yeah. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
I move.
Second. Um. Fran? Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Dan, I'd like and, uh, can I
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to point out, uh, this ordinance and the following ones that do three. It's my understanding the funding comes from that through an interim loan to the city, which is then rolled into the actual permanent loan. So it's not actual city dollars that are being spent, have to be appropriated for this, these, these three projects.
Very good. Ordinance ninety-one twenty, ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute contract with Henderson Aerial Survey. Uh, can somebody introduce?
I'll introduce it.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute contract with Henderson Aerial Survey, Caricon and R-CAP for sewer plant project phase three and declaring an emergency. Whereas upon recommendation of STANTEC engineering, it is necessary to hire Henderson Aerial Survey with mapping and digital phone, Caricon, geotechnical engineering and R-CAP environmental review for the sewer project phase three. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city manager is authorized to execute contracts with Henderson Aerial Survey mapping and digital photos, Caricon, geotechnical engineering and R-CAP environmental review for sewer plant project phase three in accordance with exhibit A attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio revised code seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary to timely meet the funding application deadline. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Truly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twenty-third day of November, two thousand twenty.
Any counsel discussion? Motion to suspend?
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Jones? Yes. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd just like to say the reason we're all coughing is because of Harry's cleaning is very, very strong.
Yes. Uh, you'll have to lock down with me before you know it.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Smith?
What's the question? I didn't hear it.
A motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Is that, doc? Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Fran? Yes. Yes.
Uh, we want to ordinance ninety-two twenty, ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract. We already did that, sorry. Return the page. So ordinance ninety-three twenty.
No, we need to do ninety-two twenty. No, we did ninety-one twenty. This is for the city manager and, uh, the city attorney.
Okay, okay. Same thing, ninety-two twenty. Ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with the Great Lakes Community Action Partnership.
No. I agree, Greg. It's, it's misprinted on here. If you actually read the ordinance.
It's listed as ninety-three. If you actually go to the actual.
Ordinance, yeah. Okay.
Okay, so this ninety-three twenty.
It's ninety-two twenty.
Ninety-two twenty. It's city manager to execute a contract with the city attorney. Okay. Somebody wants to introduce that? I'll introduce it. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with city attorney Gary Hunter for sewer plant project phase three and declaring an emergency. Whereas upon recommendation of STANTEC engineering, it is necessary to hire Gary Hunter, city attorney, to do legal services for the sewer project phase three. Now therefore be ordained, ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city manager is authorized to execute the contract with city attorney Gary Hunter for legal services for sewer plant project phase three in accordance with exhibit A attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio revised code seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary to timely meet funding application deadline. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Truly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twenty-third day of November, two thousand twenty.
Any counsel discussion? Um, motion to suspend?
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Fran? Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Second.
I move.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Fran? Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Yeah, ninety-three twenty?
Dan, I need I gotta the next one. I need to, uh, point out that, uh, Michael Bess sensitive, he needs um, Susan to certify those three ordinances, ninety-two. And, uh, Scott, you need to get them signed and he wants to pick them up yet, I think, before Thanksgiving.
What, ninety-one, ninety-two and ninety-three?
Uh, ninety, ninety-one and ninety-two, yeah. I don't think ninety-three is part of this.
Okay.
Well, that's actually.
It's the great.
The cell tower lease.
That.
Ninety-three is the cell tower lease.
Uh, no, that's not part of, that's not part of phase three.
Okay, alright.
It's just ninety-one and ninety.
Ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two. Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
So ordinance ninety-three twenty, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute contracts with Henderson Aerial Survey. Check them.
Look at the actual ordinance.
So, uh, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute, modify the access for cell tower leads. Somebody introduce?
I'll introduce it.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a modification of the access for the cell tower lease located on the sewer plant site and declaring an emergency. Whereas cell tower access roads need to be moved on the sewer plant site and therefore the cell tower lease needs modified. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city manager is au- is authorized to execute modification of the cell tower lease access road in accordance with exhibit A attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. With such further changes as are recommended by STANTEC engineering and the city. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio revised code seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary to timely meet the funding deadline. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Truly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twenty-third day of November, two thousand twenty.
Counsel, discussion?
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Ms. Jones? Yes.
Yeah, before you actually act on this, I might tell you what's going on. I think counsel knows, but I probably doesn't. Um, this, the access road is underneath the location of the sewer plant. So we have to move it over. Uh, the city will have to pay for that, but there's plenty of money that was saved in the acquisition of the real estate to cover that cost. Uh, it's a super emergency because, uh, A is wants to get all the clear title information and, uh, closing information to them by December first.
Thank you, Harry.
You need the motions. Ben?
Yeah, uh.
Yeah, that's been made. Yeah.
Corey's second.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright.
Yeah. Mr. Smith?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
I'll move to, I'll second it.
What's the question again? I'm sorry, I'm breaking up this a little bit.
Motion to adopt?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Yes.
Fran? Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Uh, can you certify the before you leave and sit?
Certify this. You're breaking up.
Certify this one and, and, yeah, so I'd use a certified copy of it as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, ordinance ninety-four twenty, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to review the liability insurance and declare an emergency. Somebody introduce?
I'll introduce. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to renew its liability insurance with F and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city's liability insurance is scheduled to expire on February fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city manager is authorized to renew the city's liability insurance with F. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio revised code seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary to timely meet adoption deadline since the ordinance must be in effect before December thirty-first, two thousand twenty. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Truly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules on the twenty-third day of November, two thousand twenty.
Any counsel discussion? Motion to suspend?
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Fran? Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
I move.
Second. Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Fran? Yes. Yeah. Yes. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Moving along. Ordinance ninety-five twenty, an ordinance authorizing the city auditor and the president of the city council to renew its auditing contract with LGS Audit Services and declaring emergency. Somebody introduce?
I'll introduce. An ordinance authorizing the city auditor and the city, president of the city council to renew its auditing contract with LGS Audit Services and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city's auditing services contract expires on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city auditor and the president of the city council are authorized to renew the city's auditing service contract with LGS Audit Services. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio revised code seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary to timely meet adoption deadline since the ordinance must be in effect before December thirty-first, two thousand twenty. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Truly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twenty-third day of November, two thousand twenty.
Counsel, discussion? Motion to suspend?
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Fran? Yes. Yes. Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith?
Looks like we lost him.
There he is.
He's back now.
Yeah, I'm back. I, I, I'm, yes, I'm suspended.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Jones? Yes. Mr. Smith?
Is this all adoption?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Fran? Yes.
Moving on to ordinance ninety-six twenty. Ordinance saying the authorized staff in the police department and declaring an emergency. Uh, I'll introduce.
An ordinance setting the authorized staff in the police department and declaring an emergency. Whereas, the staffing in the police department needs to be modified, now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the staffing in the police department is as follows. Chief and nine full-time police officers and one part-time police officer. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio revised Code 731.30 because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary to timely meet the funding application deadline, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Willing acted by council on first reading after suspension of the rules on the 23rd day of November 2020.
Council discussion?
What's, what's the funding deadline you're talking about?
Yeah, it's hard to say, Greg, that didn't get recognized, that date on there. It should say, uh, to meet the requirements that we don't have to fill the sergeant's position right now. There's a, there's a state law that basically says after 120 days, you have to fill a position and make, the sergeant's position is vacant, and so we need to, uh, delistion and then council can make a decision later on what they want to do about the sergeant's positions, but it's, uh, it's a technical requirement and the union wants us to fill the position, and I told them we're not filling it right now because we don't know what we're doing.
So does that mean...
So it should just be...
Does that mean as well, cutting it down, is that what that means?
Uh, I asked, uh, East Chief Fitch and, and he said, asking what the current staffing was, and that's what he gave me, was the nine and the part one nine person, yes. I think they're anticipating possibly. Go.
That was my understanding of the thing.
What?
If that's your understanding, then, I don't know, that's what I was given was from one, so...
I mean, I have no problem doing away the sergeant's position and replacing it with a patrolman, but, yeah, with the eight people that I understood included the sergeant and then the chief.
There's the, uh, the eight patrolmen, the chief, and the part timer. The one thing that was left out of there, Gary, is the clerk that's over there. I don't know if that matters or not, I just want to bring it up.
I guess, I didn't understand what you said. So, what did you, I didn't understand what you said.
What I was saying is that there's eight full-time police officers, then there's the police chief, which makes nine, and then, uh, the part-time police officer that we have, and then also we have a part-time clerk.
Well, the part-time clerk wouldn't be covered under the police staffing, it would be the, uh, nine officer, is he one of the eight or is he separate?
He is one of the eight, um, he's a, a regular police officer.
Okay.
Now, and, uh, so, once this ordinance, if this ordinance passes, it'll be eight regular police officers plus the police chief, nine, plus, um, one part-time police officer, and that would be it.
Can we amend the ordinance to say that, Gary, then, then suspend...
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so that's not what it is, so, in his budget, he has worked it out to where by cutting overtime, he's putting on a 10th officer, which means he'll have nine patrolmen and himself makes 10.
Hey, but I remember at a meeting when they changed to do paper work, that he said he absolutely would not need another person.
In his budget, he's not asking the city for no more money, he just reworked his budget, and that's what we talked about in police and fire, we also talked about finance.
For now.
Adding a 10th officer.
I didn't think that was far down yet, I thought we were still talking about just getting, uh, changing these sergeant positions to a regular police officer in this ordinance. I didn't think we were talking about the 10th addition.
Right now they have eight officers, correct?
Eight and ten.
Okay, so, are we adding the ninth officer plus the chief makes 10?
And a part-time.
Well, so there's still a part-time position, just being put with clerk.
Yeah, this is just an update to the staffing ordinance.
Which means they can have more people though, correct?
They're gonna have more people, one, one more officer, correct? And still within the same budget.
I was arguing with you about budget, I was saying, he says that he would not need enough.
If I could break in here, I don't think we had, know for a fact right now that we're gonna have enough money next year to support a full-time officer plus the $28,000 in, in health insurance, and I think it's premature, we got, uh, labor relations coming up, we got insurance, uh, uh, costs that are going up, and I don't think right now we can say, I've looked, we, the chief looks at the budget, he can make the 10th man work and stay within his budget, I just think that's, that's wishful thinking at best, and we need to wait till we get, uh, better control of finances before we make that move.
Well, Greg, his budget's...
Yeah, I, I tend to agree. Can I get the floor? I tend to agree with Greg, the intent was to delete the sergeant's position, which isn't being filled at the moment, go with list what staffing, on the staffing ordinance that we currently have, that creates maximum flexibility next year to, or increase another police officer or some of the sergeant's positions, depending what your available funding is there, so, the intent right now is just to create a staffing ordinance that is consistent with the number of employee had in the police department at the present time, as I understand it.
I make a motion to, I make a motion to amend the ordinance to what our city manager stated.
That would be chief and eight and one part-time.
No, it, it, this, what, this was discussed in the police and fire and in finance. This will allow the chief to do, or you can do a platoon, right? What, who was the, you were the...
The people's panel.
Panama, okay. The 10th officer will allow the chief to do a Panama schedule, uh, which will still fit within his budget, uh, will not create any overtime for the city. Uh, the 10th person is required, if I understand correctly, for that type of system. So that is actually the intent. We did discuss also about abolishing the sergeant position, but, uh, this is really a staffing ordinance increase to allow another full-time officer, uh, which I believe the chief is not going to be getting involved, maybe February or March is when he intended, uh, bringing an officer on, but it's gonna allow him to be able to work his schedule, uh, with this Panama schedule.
If he's not gonna do it, if he's not gonna do it to March, there's no reason for us to do it tonight, and I'll make my motion again to amend it to eight, one and one, as the city manager stated, if anybody will second that motion.
I'll second that.
I don't understand why we need the motion, if that's how it already reads.
No, it reads the chief and nine.
This ordinance does, we do, we can just table this ordinance then, we don't need to change this because the staffing ordinance is already chief, eight and one.
Okay.
With that, we use the sergeant position there, Gary don't want there.
You have to fill sergeant position unless you delete the sergeant, you have to delete, at least delete the sergeant's position. You don't want to do anything else, delete the sergeant's position.
Then it's, this, this whole thing's been wrong.
Yeah, it's not listed in here.
The sergeant position's not mentioned in this ordinance at all.
That's because we set the staffing level at just the police officers and the chief. When you change the staffing to just the police officer, you don't have to say you're deleting the sergeant's position because it doesn't exist anymore, the staffing, it calls for a police chief and, and patrolman.
Gary, my question, the way I...
There's a state law that says we have to fill the position, that you can either not do something tonight, do it at the next, if, uh, get called on the, the union's gonna do it, get called on filling a position, I guess we'll advertise for the position, give a test for the sergeant's position.
Gary, there's a motion, a second on the floor.
Can I ask a question? So what I hear Gary saying is that because the sergeant position is in the current inactive staffing model, that unless we amend it, then, that has to be filled within 120 days? And we're coming up on that?
Right, yeah, yeah, you are. Uh, and, uh, you also have a lieutenant's position too, which I dropped out too, I didn't, uh, it wasn't, you know, Eddie Kurtz retired from the lieutenant's position, and we didn't fill that position either. So what you're doing here is effectively dropping a lieutenant and a sergeant's position and just having a chief and police officers, and then it was, I was told was, if there's money in the budget, uh, next year or so, you may do something with creating a sergeant's position but not recreating a losing, that's what I was told.
Gary, with my, with my amendment deal, what's what you need?
Uh, what I, what I need is just make sure that all we have in the staffing ordinance is a chief and X number of, uh, policemen, and that, that solves the purpose that I needed this time.
So I have amendment on the floor, it says eight, four...
Nine or 10.
What, what I'm saying, it's exactly what you want, I have amendment on the floor.
Yeah, you understand, it does, whether you authorize nine or 10 police officers, as long as you don't off, continue to authorize a lieutenant and a sergeant.
Okay, I have, one more, one more question for, um, Scott, Frank. Scott, I guess just to clarify, right now there's a chief, eight full-time officers and one part-time officer?
That's correct, plus the part-time clerk, so...
Okay.
And I'm just gonna, I guess, regurgitate what, uh, what Gary was saying, and, and I misunderstood, I didn't realize, because there's actually two different things happening, and I wasn't aware that we're going for both of them now, so the first thing that I understood was, we had to abolish the sergeant's position, uh, to save pushing somebody into that position for different reasons, it's just not available right now. So that's what I thought we were doing. There has been multiple discussions with all of you about adding the 10th, and I apologize, I guess I didn't realize that we were asking for that tonight, um, so I just want to clarify that, you know, that, that is definitely in the discussion, uh, chief has budgeted by, uh, giving up, by consolidating, for everybody's record out there, he consolidated his part-time, his full-time and all his overtime budgets into one, he was able to draw out a Panama schedule, should you guys make the decision to add a 10th, and that are put two per shift, and that eliminates the, not only the overtime problem, but also the single officer per shift issue, so officer safety is very important to the chief, and making sure he has two officers on duty to back each other up instead of one, is definitely one of his main goals. So, I hope that cleared up the muddy water, um, because I can definitely see how this is definitely muddied up.
Yeah, and the, we're in the middle of negotiations, chief wants flexibility as to setting the work week, whether it's the Panama 12-hour syst, uh, system, or it's a 10-hour system, or it's an eight-hour system, so, at least in my mind, you're kind of premature to add the extra position right now, because the same 120 days is gonna apply to that, it applies to the, uh, and technically the lieutenant's posi, position. Um, you know, I, I tend to agree that you're better just go with what we have right at the moment, and then, once negotiations are completed, uh, make the decision on, you know, what, whether you're gonna, what, how, how you're gonna increase the staffing, you know, whether you're gonna bring some sergeants back, you're gonna add just another patrol or what you're gonna do.
Point of order, I have that motion on the floor, to do, to do exactly what Gary's...
And I'll second it.
Correct. All right, just take a little minute.
Okay, and this is, this is the beginning, one of the... Um, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Sherman?
No.
Frank?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion to suspend.
Uh, Mike, wait a minute, my account four voted for it, so the motion says, so then it's up to you to, you're now, if you want to suspend the rules, you can do it or, or let it go.
Well, let's suspend the rules and pass it, then you can do whatever you want later on. Our motion's to suspend.
Could somebody just read that amendment, I don't think we could hear it out here.
It's the amendment, it's the amendment, everything else is the same. Yeah, so it'll be chief and eight full-time officers and one part-time officer.
Does that leave out the part-time clerk from the staffing ordinance?
The part-time clerk's not an officer, so, that doesn't count.
The, the clerk is, is a, not really a police position, it's another position that council creates that's, you know, it's not a, the clerk's position is not suddenly had to be certified as a police officer to hold the position, so I don't really regard that as a, you know, a police officer position that's under the police staffing order.
I'll move to suspend. Create already... Oh, I'm sorry, I'll second. Okay. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Uh, no, Chris, I don't understand the position of it.
Um, yeah, yeah. And, uh, this was...
Yes. Goes the...
Suspension fail, uh, it goes back, it's just, and, uh, uh, I'll have to check on what, what the 120 days time limit is, you may have to have a special meeting to deal with this.
I just, I don't understand the whole thing.
No, Gary said we can't vote because we failed the motion to suspend, I was gonna go on, we just can't suspend it.
Right.
So this is our second reading, yeah, yeah.
All right, let's, uh, move on to city managers.
All right, good evening, everyone, I'll try to keep it, uh, short and sweet because I'll probably start hacking. Um, the first thing I wanted to put out there was, we have somewhat of a remedy to the dog situation, um, to refresh everybody's memory, the, we've had a problem lately with dogs running about and, uh, especially on weekends, and nowhere to take dogs, nor anyone to come pick them up, so, Chief Fitch has made a tentative agreement with the county folks, and, uh, as long as officers able to transport the, uh, dogs down to the pound, we're able, or the shelter rather, we are able to do that, so there's some variables in there, availability and so forth, but we do at least have permission to take dogs down there now. Good news on water quality, so, some of you, especially out in the public, know that we just sent you the letter a week or two ago about the TTHM results, and that we exceeded the EPA requirement of .80. Uh, we just had our, uh, it takes time to get that letter approved and mailed out, but we've already had a sample since then, and we are pushing the best numbers that the city's ever seen. Currently on our 691 line, which was 1.3 or 1.4, uh, which caused the letter to be sent out, is now down to .5, and then the, uh, St. Charles Street line is down to .23, so, the numbers are extremely good for the TTHMs, and that's thanks to, uh, water plant crew out there making modifications to the chemical mix and, uh, so forth, so they're gonna continue to monitor that. We had a couple engineers come in and look at our situation out there to look for other means to tackle this TTHM issue. Um, all the vendor, the vendors that have come in so far have stated that we should be going down the path we're going before adding mechanical means, however, that definitely remains in our hip pocket, um, at a later time. So, the second thing about water is, a few months back, you folks appropriated money to clean well two. Well number two's been out of service for quite some time, um, I'm happy to report that well two came back, uh, they got it cleaned out, they're rebuilding the pump now, however, they float tested it, and it's flow testing at 1,300 gallons per minute, which is 500 gallons a minute more than when it was brand new. Excuse me, brand new, it only pushed out 800 GPM, if my memory serves me correctly, but either way, it is pumping better now than new, no matter what, and we came in slightly under budget, uh, not, not, we didn't bust the budget, we didn't save a whole lot of money from the original, but, uh, it's very nice knowing that we have that well functioning very well, and that eliminates the need to, at this time, to explore another well. Also, it's in the budget to start a well cleaning process, or schedule rather, so, uh, we got it built into the budget, pending that approval, we will be able to, uh, clean another well right after the first of the year, and, or at least get on the schedule after the first of the year and move forward with that. The, the water crew's been busy doing a lot of repairs... The water crew's been busy doing a lot of repairs. Uh, one specific one was out on, uh, uh, Sandy Lane. They, uh, placed a line that they've had multiple issues with over the years and. Uh, I forget what Jason said. I think he said 200 feet possibly of the line that they put in. Uh, it's one of those places that's similar to Mill Street where we have a lot of leaks. So this is a, a nice improvement and the team did a really good job. Bad news, I'm sure most of you've heard that the leaf machine broke. The, uh, it was the motor. I don't remember exactly which piece it was, but the guy said, uh, even getting it on order now, it's going to be back ordered for quite some time. Uh, so we've suspended leaf removal for this year. The parts are all going to be put on order as soon as the budget's passed and we'll get that part in and rebuilt in springtime. Also, the hot box was ordered. It should be here in about three months. That's to maintain asphalt, uh, at home. So we're trying to get our patching operation to an opera, uh, to a standardized format. And to not waste material. So the hot box with that does will maintain the hot mix for an extended period of time. We can even plug it in at night and it'll maintain it overnight, which will save a lot of waste. Um, as one of our main problems now is the hot mix cools off too much before we get it into a hole properly. So between that and a couple of other improvements and training improvements next year, this pothole repair should look significantly different than what you've seen in the past. Chestnut Street's still closed. A lot of people are getting tickets down there for parking on it, driving on it, you name it. It's not open yet. Tomorrow tentatively is scheduled, uh, the mandrel test for the new sewer line. Pending the results of that test, um, it's possible to open up Chestnut Street soon. I would not expect it to open this week. Uh, hopefully next week we'll be able to get it opened up. And just as a reminder to everybody, that'll be a one-way opening. So it'll be one way coming in from Athens down to Borough Boulevard and it'll remain one way. For, until next spring when the asphalt plant opens again. Um, also as a reminder, the last three inches of asphalt, uh, was not applied. I decided to, uh, wait till next year. Based off all the settling and everything else that we've had, I suspect that there'll be, uh, settling in that area throughout the year or throughout the winter. And that'll, uh. Uh, create holes in the new asphalt. So I just wanted to not have brand-new asphalt with holes and repairs cut into it when it's not even a year old. So. Apologize for the inconvenience till springtime. Hopefully any settling that's going to happen is done by then and, uh. Or at least the best of our ability and then we can get that paved and opened up fully. The, the last thing I have for everyone is we had to finish out spending on COVID monies. So what we did to finish out spending on COVID money was, uh, we paid off the police truck. And we purchased another truck for the utility department. So, uh, we had, uh, we found multiple reviews on that and provided it to our attorney as well. He saw. Had to make things to him on the surface. So we got some behind the scenes paperwork to do, but we met the deadline and executed all the COVID monies. Uh, Chief Barber already explained the one that we did for. The disinfectant machine that apparently smells really good. I'm not sure and, uh.
He finally got it.
And then. The other thing that we spent the money on was the, uh, uh, Microsoft Office to get us through the next year. Currently, uh, projects, uh, I'm not sure because I haven't been there. The bathroom, uh, projects was, were supposed to start this past weekend. And, uh, also the electric project should be starting this week, which is to get rid of all the switches and put in touchless switches. So pending your question, that concludes my brief.
Do you know how much the funds can be for the relief fund?
I believe Jason told me it was right around 1,200. That's. Speaking of Jason, um, so the long-winded fence around, and that's what I forgot to share with you guys, the fence around, uh, Nelson's Common. So. Uh, our insurance lady was here a few months ago and she did a walk-around inspection and she brought it to my attention that we might want to have them. Return that in for an insurance claim, uh, because we only have a thousand dollar deductible. Well, we got several quotes and long story short, they authorized. I believe it was Friday, but it could have been today based off Jason's email, but they're going to be sending the city a check for us to get that work done. Uh, Jason's already made contact with the contractor to get that work happening.
Okay, do you have more questions? And we'll lose the good as the order. Uh, I'll start it off. So just want to remind everybody to be safe. COVID is starting to amp up and. And, um. More so in Nelsonville now. So everybody just be careful, social distance, wear your masks, wash your hands. Uh, also want to send a, a big thank you out to Ms. Barber, code enforcement. And the police, or I'm sorry, the fire department for their efforts today over 77 Poplar. Uh, that property's been cleaned up almost, almost done. Went through two dumpsters. Uh, we also had help from Keller Blackburn's. What do they call?
Diversion.
The diversion program. So he sent up a bunch of workers. They, they, they were great. They worked well. Uh, so.
Utilities helped.
Utilities was out there. They helped. And, uh, it was, it was a good day. They did a cleanup. We do need. One more dumpster though to, to finish it off and probably. Next week or something. Am I correct?
Yeah, I've got, um, a few more people coming in tomorrow. We're just going to do a little few things here and there, but we don't have any more room for the dumpster.
Right. So, I mean, if cows could find it in their heart to come up with $500 to finish off that project, that'd be awesome.
Hey, Mr. Councilman, I think I just said that, um, it may already be in the code budget. The operating supplies.
Thank you.
Is it in the code budget?
Sorry.
Yeah, I said it may already be in the budget. At last check, there was, uh, room within the, um, codes, uh, operating supplies. I think it was. More than 500, so we might be able to pull it off as it is.
I received a grant that paid for the two dumpsters today.
Right.
And then I got a $300 donation. Oh, nice.
Right, right. So, yeah, so citizens are, are, you know, chipping in and helping. I think that's just awesome. Again, good job to Becky and her, her whole team and the fire department for. Chipping in, cutting down trees. We'll see a photo of it with me in it. And the utility department as well. Go ahead. Ms. Grant?
Um, well, Jay, we're talking about the healthy levels in the street fund. I'd just like to take a minute to thank the residents again for voting for the street levy this year and last year. Um, and thanks to Mr. Fitch for taking care of the dog problem in town. Well, working on it.
Okay, um, just to echo what Dan was saying too, just about COVID, um, they do know that it's. Running through it because, um, Kerry said in our community, so. Stay safe and stay healthy and mask up and distance. Um, but with that, I also, uh, I saw this to remind everyone that the grace period for expired driver's licenses and license tags, um. Expires on December 1st. So, um, I guess if, if you haven't done that yet and you had an expired license plate or an expired driver's license that. Um, you can be cited for that, um, beginning December 1st again. So don't forget about that.
Mr. Smith?
I have, I want to, I want to add the part about COVID, especially if you're older or have diabetes. Be very careful and just try not to go anywhere where, where you would get, uh. Uh, infected. Younger people probably have a better chance of, uh, dealing with this than older people and. I've been made aware of, uh, a couple of Nelsonville residents who have passed away because, because of COVID and. I'd like for everybody to remember their families. I'm not going to say the name because I don't know that it's been as common knowledge of what they died from, but. Uh, it, it's very serious for people that are compromised, which is why I'm not at the meeting tonight, while I'm dialing in. So. Uh, you have to be careful and you have to, you're responsible for yourself. Nobody else is going to take care of you. So, uh, take care of yourself. Uh, I also, uh, I, I'm concerned about the garbage, uh, contract getting out and with Scott being sick now. I'll call you tomorrow, Scott, and we'll make some arrangements to go over. To get, to get things to Gary so he can get the bid specs out if you're, if you're feeling good enough to do that. Um, if you're not feeling good enough to do that, I'll just do it, I'll just do it with Gary, but we need to make sure. That, uh, bid specs or the bids to get out on the new garbage contract. Anyway, I, I'll try to call you tomorrow and talk to you about it. If you don't feel good, just tell me you don't feel good and we'll talk the next day. So, and that's all I have.
Um, so, uh, I wanted to thank, uh, Harry for putting together my computer here today and, uh, for those that aren't here. Um, we do have the other computers, so in case we need, uh, council needs the missed meeting, uh, we can remotely do that from home. So Greg, you'll have a laptop that, uh. You'll be able to utilize, um. Uh, you know, for the next meeting if necessary. Uh, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Harry. And, uh, I just want to say, um, you know, Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I know it's kind of an odd Thanksgiving, um, with this year and the pandemic. Um, but, you know, I, I try to be eternally optimistic about everything in life, so. I try to look on the bright side and, and give thanks for all the positive things that are going into my life and I hope that everyone else can do that as well. I'm thankful for everything that the city is, is doing, uh, today for the citizens and all the employees. So. They're doing a great job. I want to, you know, send my thanks to them. Uh, spend time with family. It's very important. Um, and I hope everybody has a safe and, and wonderful holiday.
There is no executive session tonight, so.
May I? Sorry, may I jump in for a second? Greg, thank you for the reminder on the trash. Uh, just text me what time you want to get together. I got a couple other meetings tomorrow, but that's about it. But I did want to bring to everyone's attention. Uh, this came late last week. Uh, the. The Athens Hocking Solid Waste District, if you recall, has been paying to have the recycled dumpsters. Uh, dumped additional time during the week. So the recycled dumpsters have been getting dumped twice a week. Um, I can share, it's helped out the problem quite a bit as far as the overflowing goes. It hasn't necessarily fixed the problem of people dumping trash outside of it. Um, but it doesn't seem to be as bad to me, but, uh, Becky could probably chime in on that as well. But I wanted to share with everyone that, uh, they're no longer paying for that after December. And we have two months gap before our new contract will, uh. Be, you know, started issued and, uh, so I want to let you guys know if that's something that you want to continue doing. Um, Rumpkin reported that it would be $1,265 a month, per month for those two months if we want to maintain that.
Thank you, Scott. Anything else, anyone?
I, I just want to say that I clean around the dumpsters and clean the trash out of the, the recycling dumpsters. And we have found individuals' names out of town dumping in our dumpsters. And putting stuff, laying star foam on the ground with their identification. And so we will cite people. For littering. If we find out who they are and we got identification, we will cite them even if they don't live in the city. So please don't do it because I've got enough work to do than to clean and check and babysit these dumpsters. Please, I'm just, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any? Do we have any?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Officer.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. Got to ask if there was any comments.